Okay, it is Tuesday, March 17th, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to shift things around a little bit because we've got a lot to cover today. So we're going to do our presentations right off the bat. This week is National Public Works Week, and we have a proclamation for them. If you want to come get those. Come get this. These. Okay. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustain sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Missouri. And whereas, whereas, whereas. In witness whereof, we do hereby set our hands and cause to be affixed the seal of County of Cole in the City of Jefferson this 17th day of May 2022. There you go. You can read the rest of the word. It's a cliff.
Whereas, whereas, whereas.
Okay. Then we'll do EMS week. We're on a roll.
You're going to have to read mine or else it's in the [inaudible].
Miss that one? Come on. Come on.
That's important, guys. Get up here.
It's cheaper than lighting.
Don't be shy, you guys.
Okay. Whereas the week of May 15th through the 21st is designated as Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas the members of Cole County Emergency Medical Services provide life-saving pre-hospital medical care to all residents and visitors of Cole County 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the members of Cole County Emergency Medical Services answered over 12,000 calls for service in 2021. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore, we, the Cole County Commission, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, 21st, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. You get it.
Okay, right here. It's a bit better.
Okay.
Congratulations. Thank you. Well, I checked out Bert Goodie and I were here. Chief. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Is the sheriff around? Okay. We're still, we're still adjusting our. Our sheriff has to be somewhere, so we are going to discussion of property at 314 Gateway.
There's really not much. Since y'all emailed, we located the owner. The owner said no one's supposed to be there. We've responded with deputies and have. We responded with deputies and we've moved people on. We've arrested two for keeping an eye on the location. So we've contacted, I think, health department's contacted the bank. Yeah. So I think they've contacted the bank and we're, as far as we're concerned, we're moving forward. There's no flyers there. As soon as they come in, we arrest them, so.
Okay. Have we towed the vehicles?
I don't know the answer to that. They were marked for tow, so if they were there after the 72 hours, then they were towed.
Okay. Joe, you want to real quick?
Yeah, so I did talk to Bobby at Penny Mac and then Sarah at Mortgage Contract Services, who's actually, Penny Mac is being assisted by Mortgage Contract Services. And so they are, they're getting the locks, the lockbox put in. And then that should be in either today or tomorrow. And then they think by next week, sometime next week, they'll actually be, have it contracted to remove items and things like that. So that is their, that's their best guess of when things are going to happen.
Okay.
Those are great, hasn't that since?
Yeah, they know. I've already, already had a lot of discussion with them, and they are very well aware. I mean, I said, there's probably 100 bags of trash and, and that I can see. And so, oh yeah, we're used to that. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we will go back to our presentations from invited guests, and we will have Rape and Abuse Crisis Center give an update. If you would come up here and speak into the. Oh. Oh. Do you have any different? Oh, yeah.
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay.
You want me to go ahead and just say them real quick?
Yeah, do that real quick. Yeah, we need to go down through our meetings too.
Okay, so I have the Collectors' April 2022 fees, the Treasurers' April 2022 reconciliation report, and the Shares' April 2022 fees.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, we'll go back to Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got our Solid Waste Management District, Annual District Council Meeting today. Transportation Committee Meeting tomorrow morning. Got another education meeting after it. Council Board of Directors tomorrow at noon. The Jeff City Regional Economic Partnership Board Investor Meeting Thursday afternoon. Chamber Connections Thursday afternoon. That's about it.
Tomorrow, JC Chamber Transportation Committee Meeting. On Wednesday, Roden Bridge Advisory Committee and Stormwater Management on Thursday. Also on Thursday, I have Heartland Port Friday. You know what Friday is?
Peanut Day.
It's Peanut Day.
Yeah. Okay. Tomorrow, I've got the Central Workforce Development Board Meeting, Bank Board Meeting. Thursday, we were supposed to have a Traffic and Safety, but we don't have anything, so that's done. It's my wedding anniversary and Linda's, and I have the.
Your sympathy card for Linda.
Sons of American Revolution Meeting. There's a police ball over at Capitol Bluffs. Friday is Lions Peanut Day, and Saturday is Armed Forces Day. Okay. Now, I'm sorry, we are. If you could very quickly.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
I handed you.
So my name is Angela Hirsch. I'm the Executive Director for the Rape and Abuse Crisis Service, known as RACs. I want to introduce Victoria McBride. She is our Director of Outreach and Advocacy at RACs. I just wanted to bring you all an update of what has been happening. I took over as Executive Director in October of 2020 and have been meaning to come and meet with you all since then, but, you know, COVID happened. And I wanted to thank the Commission. Last year, you provided a COVID grant to RACs for $25,000. And we were able to use that money for some of the adaptations that we did in the shelter to make it safer for our guests while they stay with us during the pandemic. We were able to use that money to help renovate and update the guest rooms, so each room now has a private bath. We were also able to use that money to help us renovate the kitchen facility in the shelter. So instead of having one large commercial kitchen that all residents share, we now have three individual kitchens that are divided up amongst the nine guest rooms within the shelter. So there's a little bit more safety and not as many people using the space at the same time. And that has worked out very well. So thank you very much for helping us to be able to do that. I also want to let you know that through the pandemic, there were many lessons that we learned. It also caused us to have to reduce our shelter capacity. Originally, when the shelter was built in 2000, it was designed to have two families or up to four individuals in each room. We are now housing one family per room or two individuals per room. And what we have found is that that is much more conducive to a survivor's healing. So we will probably not get back to that four-person-per-room situation, just because for people's mental health and healing from the trauma that they've experienced, it's better that way. One day, we're going to have to look at capacity for survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking, and our community's capacity to handle that because we do serve nine counties in central Missouri. But right now, we're doing okay. One of the things that we have worked very hard to address that need is to beef up our outreach, and that is what Victoria is responsible for. She and her team provide every service, with the exception of shelter, that our agency has to families throughout that, those nine counties in the space where those families are, as long as it's a safe space. You can see the handout that I've given you. These are the residents that we have served, or the survivors, excuse me, that we served in 2021. And you can see that the majority of our survivors do come from Cole County, which is to be expected because we are based here in Cole County. But when you look at our residential services, you'll see that 26% of our shelter guests in 2021 came from Cole County. You'll see that 34% of our non-residential services were provided to residents of Cole County last year. We anticipate that that will continue to be the trend, that the majority of our survivors will come from Cole County. And we are here 24/7, 365, to make sure that survivors have the support that they need to get out of that dangerous environment in which they are living. So I thank the Commission for their support. EMS, law enforcement, and everybody, they are amazing partners, and we could not do what we do without them. So thank you all very much.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Angela. When I toured out there, there were a lot of carpenters and painters and electricians running around. Are they all out of there now?
They are all out of there. We are completely done, yes. So I'd love to have all of you come and see what we have done and invite you back, Commissioner Otto, to see the finished product. We're very proud of it.
So you have nine rooms for nine counties?
We have nine guest rooms for nine counties, yes, sir.
So if you have an overflow, do you have someplace to?
We do, yes. We have an arrangement so that if we do have a dangerous situation, a crisis situation, and we don't have a space available within the shelter, we do have an alternative temporarily until a space opens up. It's not ideal, but it works.
Just let us know when.
Yeah.
Let me know what works with your schedule, and we'll make it happen. We'd love to have you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay. Next is Carla Malone Stack.
Okay. So I'll just kind of hand it to you when it's time to go to the next one. So hi, y'all. Thanks for having me. I've been doing a lot of research here, and at the end, I'll tell you how I got so interested in this research, but, and I'm in a hurry, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here today because you guys, you three commissioners, have the power to protect rights of us residents here in Cole County. When accidents and mistakes, glitches happen, people are affected in harmful ways while some prosper. If CISA Chief Christopher Krebs was truthful, he would not have claimed 2020 was the most secure election. Some of us have suffered great losses at the hands of big government. As commissioners, you can protect us from big government and its overreach. Okay. Hate to leave that beautiful painting, but we are. We were duped back in 2000 with the hanging Chad. It did not take days to count the votes prior to 2000. This was fabricated crisis with the intent to switch electronic, switch to electronic machines with proprietary software. Evidence is now available, the paper stock prescribed or normally used in the punch card system had been switched out that year in Florida. Why and by who? We can now see the intent, create enough fear that your vote did not count and begin to steal elections with trusted computer, trusted computer and electronic machines. Federal funds help spread the use of electronic voting machines that are still in use today. Proprietary software programs are applications in which all rights are retained by the developer or publisher. They are typically closed source, meaning the developer does not provide the source code to anyone outside the company. Proprietary programs are licensed to end users under specific terms defined by the developer or publisher. Some of your constituents don't know where to go or how to find news other than Mockingbird Media. That's not you.
Yeah.
So this is unfortunate. Some of us do know where and how to get independent journalism. I'm going to mention a few alternative sources this presentation relies on. Telegram is one of the few free speech platforms today. Most of the following researchers that I'm showing you here generate their studies there or on alternatives to the highly censored YouTube. The Epoch Times, the Gateway Pundit, OAN, Operation Freedom, George Webb, investigative journalist on Twitter, The Lone Raccoon. Follow the data with Dr. Frank, Robert W. Malone, M.D., on Telegram, and Dr. Tom Cohen on Rumble. The recent release of the documentary 2000 Mules provides more evidence confirming the mathematics and canvassing evidence Dr. Frank and his colleagues have been presenting for some time. And it will continue to raise awareness that the 2020 general election was stolen from the American people. It's not the first time, though. Most of us after 2020 thought the courts were the only way to remove election fraud and bring evidence into the light. This is not the case. County Commissioners across the nation are voting no confidence in the voting machines with a return to paper counting in the precinct level. We have given our elections over to third parties. So you can see the states that don't have drop boxes there, and Missouri, of course, is one of those. Most of us after 2020 thought the courts, okay, county commissioners. So we've given our elections over to third parties. The software is owned by companies who control every aspect of the software. Vote manipulation is occurring via our machines. Voter rolls and software, not just at drop boxes and organized mules. You can see the lower slide if you can zoom in on that. Cole County is in that yellow area, which is the suspect moderate. This is a study by The Lone Raccoon. I like that name. 22 months is required at our clerk's office for retention of digital and paper data from 2020 based on federal law. I'm requesting you keep it a bit longer so that we, the people, have more time to ask the right questions. As you can see from the graphic, recounts don't verify the ballots were cast. Next slide, sorry. Is that my phone?
No.
Oh, Harry. Glad it wasn't.
He has a timer, so.
Oh, wow. I've just almost finished. Yeah. Okay. Recounts don't verify the ballots were cast by legal voters. Only forensic audits can determine if a ballot is counterfeit. I'd ask for a vote of no confidence for voting machines today, but I'm slightly aware you have not been thinking about this. Here's how the electronic election systems cheat, according to Dr. Frank. Every ballot received needs to be assigned to a person who is listed in the voter rolls. Voter rolls are online, often in real time, and they are available to multiple entities, including the cheaters. If there aren't enough voters listed in the rolls to obtain a desired outcome, then cheaters can add more. That's why the voter rolls are so inflated in every state. It gives cheaters a larger credit line to work with. The electronic poll books tell you who has voted, who has ordered mail-in ballots, and who has not returned one. This is our brand of PollPad, often in real time. If insufficient mail-in ballots have been ordered, then the cheaters can order more. If the cheaters can't harvest enough mail-in ballots, then cheaters can print more. The machines can tell you what the current tallies are, often in real time. Also, they sometimes manipulate the tallies and decide which voter a ballot is assigned to. The key to all this is access to information, electronic real-time information. That's why the cheaters like centrally-located, controlled electronic election systems. Then you just need a relatively few people to do the legwork because computer algorithms can handle all of the accounting. Recounts do not expose ballot stuffing fraud because ballots are anonymous, seen in the last slide here. They give the example of, it's not how many times you count the cash in the register, it's how many of the bills are counterfeit. My last page here. According to Dr. Frank and others, let's see, we can go to eight now. According to Dr. Frank and others, the systems have become so complicated that the people running them don't understand them and have no chance of securing them. For instance, you know, the Pentagon got hacked, and, you know, if they can hack the Pentagon, they can hack us. If we want our elections to have integrity, we need to run them with our own two hands. About this time last year, I was to be in North Carolina. Mockingbird Media told us there was a crisis, gas shortages. Fear is what holds most people back. Instilling fear is also a method of control. Politicians use it for gun laws, crime bills, vaccine, profiteering, and so forth. My friends listening to Mockingbird Media in Cole County warned me via their news sources, there was no gas in North Carolina, and I would be stranded. My friends in North Carolina assured me it was one day of madness where fear brought everyone out to the pump for panic buying. I went to North Carolina and had no problems getting gas. What caused the shortage? Cyber attack by DarkSide hackers, who make their money by holding hostage companies who lack the computer software savvy to get back up and running. DEFCON is real. And that's this slide, which I think you're on. The solution is simple. Vote Amish, all paper, no machines, a single day, photo ID, hand counting, transparency. We've been paying third parties to run our elections for too long. Who is to blame? Jeff Lenberg and David Clements are proving proprietary software companies have the only access to delete some of the vital records required by law to be preserved for 22 months after the 2020 election. The study performed by The Lone Raccoon shows Cole County does not have a list of voters who voted in the 2020 election, as per their sunshine request. And that was back here on this slide. Yeah, right over here on the right. I discovered as an independent candidate seeking office, candidates can purchase the live record of registered voters, but no voter roll of 2020 voters exists. After reviewing the file, I was informed the mistake made by the United States Post Office caused the clerk's office to purge me from the record. Yes, the United States Postal Service can make mistakes with paperwork that cause voters to be removed from the voter rolls. So you know now why I'm here. I was purged. Okay, so that is over five minutes. I'm very sorry, but when the righteous thrive, the people rejoice. When the wicked rule, the people groan. Proverbs 29:2. God bless everybody here, I hope. Okay, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
So my request, you know what my request is, then? Do you remember from the, what I just read? Anybody? You know, I was rushing it with a dry mouth. Well, I would love that, Jeff, but I know that you all need time to research something like that. But the immediate request would be just if we could hold on to some of the records longer than 22 months, since I don't think people have been aware of what's happening. And the 2000 mules is just out, and it's going to really be evident that, you know, I just didn't want you to focus too much on drop boxes, you know, because it's in the software as well.
I think a lot of there's questions for the county clerk as well, so to verify some of the stuff.
Yes, there's plenty of questions there. But they've been very, I should say, very accommodating with all my questions, so.
Seems like there are campaigns that can get information on registered voters, who voted and when, so I don't know as far back as 2020.
Yes, I got that. But I was purged from that voter roll. So that's why I started looking into it. So when I picked that up, it's a $25 charge, got it home to look at it, and my name was missing as a voter. So it's a live and active voter roll that they have. So shall I get back to you all?
Are you leaving with us that?
Would you like that, Harry?
Well, it's on.
She has it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. And I'm going to give this guy this. Okay, is that it, then?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
Bids and contracts, CDL Training Reimbursement Agreement.
So I sent you some information yesterday with the new Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration guidelines and regulations on obtaining the CDL. They've added a training component to this, which, there's several requirements involved with that. Setting up the program, there is a cost to do that, and an ongoing cost for the testing modules for that. With that, and then the time that it takes our employees, current employees, to be trainers to new employees coming in to obtain the CDL, there's going to be an added expense to that in this day and age where, you know, the job market is pretty volatile right now. The CDL, having that license will become a commodity and very desirable for employers. So we're a little concerned that that could affect, you know, our staff seeking employment elsewhere. So when we bring in a new employee, run them through the process of training them, it can take up to six months, sometimes longer, to get that CDL. We want to be able to recoup some of our involvement in getting them to that point if they choose to leave within a certain time period. So this is a little bit of a deterrent for people to just get the CDL and leave and go somewhere else. And it's also, you know, just a way to recoup if they do decide to leave. So we patterned this off of one that the Sheriff's Department used for a training academy that they do, very similar to that. Rough cost, we figured was about $3,000 to get them through the process to get their at least Class B. Class A would be a little bit higher, but we're not going to differentiate between the two, whatever class of CDL they get, this agreement would go and come into play. So there's nothing for you to sign today. Just wanted to present it to you, just to see if you have any questions or concerns. I worked with Jill on drafting the agreement, and she recommended that we just present it to you. It's set up that the fellow course director would sign it along with the new employee. That's what the way the other ones were done. So just wanted to make sure you're okay with me signing this, put it the first and multiple ones after that. So is there any questions?
I've looked at the proposal, and it looks fair to me. I had one little, being the nitpicker that I'm known to be, there was, there were three things that would allow the employee not to have to pay, pay back. One of them was dies. The second one was dies in, on duty.
Killed in the line.
Or killed in the line of duty. And I just thought it was redundant to say, if you're, if you're dead, you're dead, whether you died in the line of duty or not.
So I'll add that I didn't miss all of it this year.
John says there's a difference.
Well, the line of duty deaths for, for safety employees generates a different, another retirement situation, so that may be why he threw that in there. I don't know.
I think it's fair to take that line out.
And that was really it, I think, because the third one was, was a permanent disability.
Yes.
And that's fine. Yeah. No, I didn't want to ask this question. So is it, do you have another little tool in your toolbox to hire somebody? Because you come to work here in this position, we're going to pay to train you. Now, if you go try to get, go to somewhere else, they're going to require you to pay it with your own money and so other places. Are employers now going to be getting in line with what we're doing?
I would think so. Brian, you might have a little more to add on that. Some places, I'm sure, require you to have the CDL to just even begin employment, so we'll go ahead and train you. Depends on what it is, I would imagine.
A lot of other county agencies are still requiring the Class B minimum CDL to hire, but they're also running into the same problems that we're running into, is actually getting anyone to apply for a job, much less have a CDL. So with this new requirement, it brings up a lot of issues of, you know, if you get this person their CDL for them to leave, so having this contract is great, and there are. And there are a few other agencies that are currently working on the same thing, Boone County being one of them. They're trying to come up with a contract type situation that mirrors their sheriff's department as well. I had just talked to them last week in seeing if they were having any luck because they were asking me about, we signed up as a registered training provider with me being the registered training provider person. You have to have a Class A CDL with no restrictions in order to train someone to get a Class A CDL with no restrictions. In other words, if I had a B, I couldn't, I couldn't sign off on somebody getting their A. So that, there was a little bit of a misconception about how expensive this was going to be and everything. We've actually found a website that provides the classroom training for the employee that they can actually download on their phone or they can take during the day, sitting in front of a computer for about $250 per student. And then we have, we have a person that works for us in our signing and striping department that has offered to provide the behind the wheel training. We're getting ready to start our first trainee, a new hire that we just hired a few weeks ago. He'll be the guinea pig, so to speak, to try to see how this whole thing is going to work as far as signing the document and how the, how the setting down in, in front of the computers going to work and making sure that all of the, our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted before we send them out to Troop F to actually take the test. So we might be talking to you more in the future about this, but for right now, we just want to make sure that we are getting reimbursed for our costs because we are paying this employee that's going to be doing the training, plus the $250, up to $300 through this website, entry level driver training website to provide the, the theory training, as they call it.
So these are new federal requirements?
Yes, new federal requirement that went into effect in June, or July of last year.
Just yes or no question?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so what's, what's the difference in what it was before? You have to basically be in training for a year before you can go take the test, or what's the?
No, what, what happened before, Commissioner, was they would, they would go get their permit and then we would provide the training to them through the CDL manual and then they would just sign up to go take their test. Now they, I have to go into the Federal Highway Administration's website and basically say that we offered, that this person has completed all of these different trainings within the theory training. There's about 32 modules that they have to complete. I have to sign off on that before. And then I also have to sign off on 18 different modules for the behind the wheel training. Basically, it's holding me accountable for the fact that this person got their training is all it is.
When I went and got mine, I went to a class that was about two hours. We went through it quickly, did a little testing, drive part, and I went and took the test that day and we were done. I had prior experience driving and stuff, so that wasn't that big a deal, but all the other stuff was. So I guess what's, how long does it take them now? Can you do this in two days or is it a, it'd be a year? I didn't see what all the.
It's going to probably be a minimum, it's going to depend on the student, but it's probably going to be a minimum of a month. Now, if we send this person off to a registered training provider school such as State Fair Community College offers this training, they will be able to give them all the training that they need within two weeks, but that's a cost of $1,800 per student.
Yep. So then, does the three-year timeline start from when they're hired or from when they start the program?
What we have currently decided on, as Eric and I have talked about and Matt, is that we were going to start providing this training for the employee after about three months. They have a six-month-long probationary period. We'd like for them to get the theory training done within the six months and then possibly have the behind the wheel training done within a little time after that, have them with, excuse me, have a CDL within one year. So yes, that would start the day of their full-time hire.
Actually, the way it reads here, it'd be after they complete.
It's after they complete, okay. So it's, then, incorrect.
I browsed through it, I didn't remember seeing that in there, so.
I think it's after years.
All righty. Thank you.
So we'll proceed during no objections. Hopefully it will be successful.
Thank you.
Thanks. Meet your camera.
New business, county payable review.
I'd ask for approval of county payable pending review.
Motion to approve county's payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number two.
Okay, this is for $25,544. This is insurance proceeds on three different vehicles that were wrecked, so I do need that.
For the Sheriff's Department.
For the Sheriff's.
He should have left so early.
He had a meeting, so that's why. He's like, I want to be first.
Motion to approve budget adjustment number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. John Ruth, addendum to engagement letter for assessor.
Okay, Chris has asked me to present this. And here's, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris Thussis asked me to present this addendum to the annual engagement letter. They have an inordinate number of assessment appeals.
Thank you.
And so John said that the, the one in place won't cover it all, so this just adds more funds which you can move from the assessment fund to cover.
From the assessment fund, yes. I'll make a motion to sign the addendum to the agreement with attorney John Ruth for the county assessor, Chris Thussis, in Cole County.
Is there a dollar amount on that?
Where is it? Oh, so is it currently 30? Okay, so it changes the 30 to 50.
Right.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of change order number two and four on 209-210 Adam Street Projects.
Okay, I received these proposals from GBH. Proposal two is for an additional $797.16. Looks like it's for some chaining and door.
Yeah, for, I don't think, it's for, we were going to try to use some doors we had salvaged from when we took 209 apart. It was an oddball size for down in 210 for a closet. We tried to make three doors work, then we, we just tore them apart, so we figured better just, we're the right size and right engine. Talked to all about that to you guys a long time ago. I didn't realize we had to do a change order, so, I apologize.
And then we dig in, this is one everybody likes to see, but it's change order number four. It's for a reduction of $1,274.70.
We originally were going to put some plywood up to hang stuff on. We scratched it, we just bought some two-by-sixes, hung them on the walls and hung our stuff up ourselves. And we fixed our own mop sink.
And I just want that stuff to go on record so we have it for when we change the PO. What happened to change order number three? They denied it.
Yeah, they wanted to, they were going to put, ask for some additional electric and I said, forget it, it was way too much money. We'll just do it ourselves.
Go for it.
All right, make a motion to approve change order number two and change order number four with GBH Builders in regard to the property of 209 Adam Street.
Second.
I don't. You probably should document that three was denied because if anybody asked.
I've heard on that law, but I don't know.
I think you need to stay here just to keep, keep her on her toes.
That was the second to that motion.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first reading of budget adjustment number five.
Okay, this is for $65,000 even. This is for public works and this is for surplus property that they have sold over and above what was budgeted. So traditionally, we put that back in our budget. So no action today, I'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Okay. Signing of surplus title.
This is a vehicle, it's a 2015 Ford from the Sheriff's Department, it looks like they're wanting to sell that on Blue Wave, so.
Purple Wave.
Sounds better.
All right, I'll make a motion to sign the surplus title for the 2015 Ford.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've done the, we've had Carla. Discussion of Demir's ambulance cooling.
So this was an item that came up during our research and for the new ambulance build. It's been identified that the, due to the paint and location in which some of the ambulances are stationed, the rear patient compartment is not adequately cooled. And the reason why this came to the forefront is last week, we had a critical patient from a fire, and while we were working in the back of the ambulance, the temperature was 95 to 97 degrees in the back of the ambulance. As you will recall, the Demir's ambulances have a function where the air conditioning runs off of AC power, so while they are at the station, the air conditioning is plugged in and constantly running. At the majority of our locations, that does a perfectly adequate job of keeping it cool while the ambulance is in quarters. However, at Station 7 at Lincoln University, we're stationed in a property that sits east-west facing and has no indoor or covered parking for the ambulance. So it does sit exposed to the sun without shade all day. And so therefore, it superheats the back of the ambulance, creating the condition in which I reported. So we're looking at two options to try and remedy this. One of the options that has been suggested by manufacturers is to wrap the top of the ambulance in a white or silver color, which would help reflect the heat away from the ambulance and not absorb it. So that's one option. We went out to and got a bunch of different quotes from local vendors. The cheapest one came back at $900, so I don't need any action as long as you guys are okay with me proceeding on that. My plan will be to do one ambulance, the ambulance that is traditionally stationed over there at LU, to prove, proof of concept, and then we'll look at doing the rest of them. The second one, which probably will need action, is looking at getting a metal RV carport to set up there over on the LU campus. We went out and contacted a dealer for multiple manufacturers, came back with two options. Option number one is the cheaper option, but has roughly a 10-week lead time. For a 12-by-25-by-12-foot structure that they would assemble would be $3,821.30. Again, that was a 10-plus week arrival and installation. The second option, which is one to three weeks arrival and installation for the same type of structure, is $5,638.05. So that would be, my recommendation is that for the sake of timeliness, that we would pay a little extra money to get that guaranteed installed in a short order. Two things that I would ask while you consider this, one, this would be pending legal review because Jill has not looked at the contract yet, and we would also need to contact Lincoln due to some events last week. Chief Hill was not available, so I have not to, yet to discuss this with him, so. But I would just like to get permission to keep moving on this.
And this is a shelter?
Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a metal.
Okay. Carport type of thing.
This is for on list.
And I assume that if in the future it needs to be moved, it could be moved and.
Yes. As we look at long-term plans and that sort of stuff, if we were to find another location for that ambulance over there, that shelter could be repurposed to cover some of the trailers and stuff that we have out back at the ESB, so something that we could definitely reuse.
So the EMS substation, will we be pulling the one from Lincoln possibly if?
We'd just have to cross that bridge at that time. Yeah. I know Lincoln has some building projects that they are looking at doing. That could be another point of partnership to, if they wanted to keep an ambulance on campus, that that might be an option as well. But short-term, this would be the solution. Long-term, we would reuse it if we ever ended up in a situation where we didn't need it.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
We changed the color of the ambulance, just trying to rebrand ourselves and it backfired on us.
The good news is, is the vinyl wrap, the white piece, you won't be able to see from a standing position. It'll only be the top of it.
It is what it is, though. I mean, when we were talking about the colors of it, it never really occurred that these things are sitting.
Right.
Yeah, 95 degrees is just not, that's not acceptable.
Cross-country football games and stuff like that, so I think they're just absorbing all that heat. So when we were talking about bidding the ambulances, that was one of the things that staff brought up to us and was a very valid point, but, you know, we had every good intention of changing the colors and rebranding and just, we'll go back to the white ones.
Yeah, 100%. And then also, we did address this problem in our build of our new ambulances, they will have a separate condenser for the rear patient compartment, so a dedicated unit, not just the one that is built for the chassis of the unit.
And they're white.
And they are white.
And I haven't priced these carports or anything, so I don't, I don't have a clue, so I was tough to trust your numbers.
Did we see some prices when we were looking for how to house or shelter the folks standing in line for the courthouse last year? An expanded bus stop kind of thing?
Yeah, we did.
We saw some prices, I think.
It was much more.
They were approaching this kind of, you know, it's not unreasonable a number that you've got here. Maybe that's.
No, I don't think this is unreasonable for what we're trying to do. Obviously, I'd like to pick the cheaper option, but it doesn't sound like.
One to three weeks is, is good.
10 weeks, we might as well.
Time to get them falls here.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're just, we need to move on to, we'll be able to use it somewhere else too if we end up moving, so, or finding other facilities for it.
Yeah, 100%.
So make sure that everything's good to go with the contract. I think we don't need any action today until you have the contract, right? Or do we?
I have, I have the contract. I think we talked about it earlier. We just asked for a motion to approve the contract pending legal review and confirming that it's acceptable with LU.
I'll make that motion to approve the contract pending legal review and Lincoln University acceptance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That'd be nice to you this week.
See, Sam, you shouldn't have to do that, you should be nice all the time. I'm trying to teach you that.
Okay. Signing of second request for ARPA funding.
Okay, and this is our second and final request for the money from the ARPA. Total is about a pool over $7 million. So I need the paperwork signed in order to ask for the second payment.
Make a motion to sign the second request for ARPA funding.
Second that second request.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So then, we're still waiting. When are we doing the ARPA? I thought we were going to do some kind of an update on that this morning.
That's the next. At 10 o'clock, so. Was your close meeting at 10?
No, it's 10:30. We have to be done.
Actually, we need to start it before 10:30. I told Victor I would call him at 10:30.
Okay, okay.
So what, so she's calling in, then BKD's calling in?
Yes.
At what time?
I can get her now, I told her 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll keep moving ahead. We'll keep moving ahead.
I got a meeting at noon in Columbia, so I just wanted to make sure we got time to finish this stuff off.
Yeah.
But if she wasn't available till 10, then?
I switched it on this morning.
Okay, I didn't know why there wasn't time attached to it. Is this her being available or whatever?
No.
I don't even see that on the agenda.
Yeah, down here. Update on the ARPA application.
I don't see it here.
That might have been revised, we have the revised as well.
Mine says revised.
Here.
Promise you.
You want my copy?
No, I just didn't see it here, so I was asking where it was at.
Son, nice, be nice.
Not, I opened it up off the up-drive. Yeah, just right before we got started, so. Don't mess with Debbie. I have hard enough time finding this stuff. I think I do so good and then.
Maybe that revised ought to have a date and timestamp next to it. Because maybe we revise.
22, 1, 3, and 4 sometimes.
Right, so.
Well, this is a combination of me and all of the working on it.
Okay.
It's okay. I just couldn't find it, so. Sam had it, so he's the boss. Still only have one vote though. It's not like at home where, yeah, Dad, let me, let me go ask Mom. Unless you're the daughter, I guess, right Debbie? It's like other dads. I have boys, so they just always went to mom. Circumvented the process. And then the closed session is at a certain time?
Well, we're, 10:30 is when we will be talking to the attorney on one of our pending lawsuits.
So it's at a certain time as well?
Yes, yes.
So they're calling in or they're coming here?
Jill is taking care of, no, it's a phone in.
Okay.
So Jill's. But with what we're paying, we need to make sure we.
Teresa, are you there? There she is. Can you hear us, Teresa? Now, can you hear us, Teresa?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, all right.
Perfect.
So we're just jumping into it and obviously you know we're hearing a ton about the application. And so I'm just gonna let you take it over from here.
Okay. Yeah, so we work with a team with the Salesforce application, or I mean, they just, Salesforce does a ton of stuff. So we work with, they're called CRM, and they're the ones that develop all our kind of application processes and things like that. So they're the ones that need to work through the building up of the application within the Salesforce system. So that's kind of the delay now. They're very busy, like, you know, everybody is, but. So I finally pinned it down and got them to say it would be about two weeks. And they think about 50 hours worth of work to build it all up. And that's, you know, all the behind-the-scenes stuff. And the reason Salesforce is, you know, our preferred method is just because it works really well as a housing for all the documents and all the applications. It's all kind of a one-stop shop to have all of those things. It does a lot of background calculations, like if, like those calculations for the risk assessments and if, you know, they're suspended or debarr'd, it does those kind of things. It does a lot of holding of the documents that they would upload. And then you can do all your correspondence. You can keep all of that outlined in Salesforce. So that's, that's kind of why we recommend it when you do an application process, that you're going to be reviewing applications, you're going to be approving applications. It's just one of those kind of, it's more automated, I guess. If you kind of go through your own web system like we did with the needs assessment, it's kind of less work on the front end, but more work on the back end. So there'll be a lot more manual kind of calculations and doing things like that. So that's kind of where we're at now. Happy to answer what questions I can as far as that goes. I know you guys want to get this thing out as soon as possible to the citizens and everything to start this thing going, but it's, if, I think it would be a good idea to wait if that's the way you want to go, unless you've got a few projects that you know that you're gonna, to go with, and it's just a matter of them filling out the applications. But if you're trying to get, you know, a bunch of applications in, say, I don't know, 50 or so applications, it's probably better to go through Salesforce and have that kind of housing system in place.
So would it be like June 1st then? By June 1st, we would have it?
That's, two weeks, he said, is what he gave me. So, I don't know if that's a, I don't know if you see in the money pit, but two weeks, two weeks kind of thing. So it's one of those where it, that's, that's what he says, the 50 hours and the two weeks. They've done other projects like that and they kind of, they thought it wouldn't take very long. And that's why he's given, I think that's kind of on the Mac side because they had another project that they did that was a little similar to this. And it just, they had to keep adding things to the application as they were going along. And it just seemed like it took double the time is what he said. So I think that's what we're looking at.
Teresa, did you use the CRM for the CARES money? Isn't that how we went through?
Correct. Correct, yeah. This is the same people, the same team.
So what's the difference gonna be between this application and the CARES money? Why can't we use something basically the same and make a couple revisions and let's get this going? It's been dragged on for a long time.
Right, it's very similar, it's very similar. There's a few more kind of hurdles with the ARPA money. Like the CARES money had some specific guidelines, so we, I don't know if you remember right, but we had kind of the, you could put it in each bucket, what you wanted to do. And, I mean, if we want to kind of, we're trying to keep it fairly simple based off kind of the needs assessment. And I don't have an answer for you why, why it takes that long for them. That's just, that's the quote they gave me. I don't know all the coding and things like that, why that takes so long, but that's the number they gave me, so.
We have an internal request from the sheriff and EMS that I've been, one or both of them had visited with me the last week that we really need to get that one moving because of the timeline and some other things on the backside of that. Is, are we, would be, we be in any danger to go ahead and approve an internal request? Was this, is this radios, is that what that's about or?
CAT system and.
Teresa, this would be at about 10 million revenue replacement.
Correct. I mean, you could have it above that 10 million if you wanted, but yeah, if you're just.
Well, I mean, it's, this was, and actually, the number is dropping from what the first number they threw at us.
Well, let's hold off longer, see how much.
No, no, we have to, because we have a timeline to.
There's no stopping them from going ahead and starting that project, so to say, under the 10 million ARPA requirements. If they want to approve that today, they can move forward on that one as far as that goes. Is that true, Teresa?
I think Eric wants to make, make the request and kind of a.
Does there have to be an application if it comes from the 10 million period? I mean, if it's going to, why does somebody outside of Coke County have to fill out one if our own agencies don't have to? You'd think everybody would have to? Or if we're taking it from our 10 million pot of money that they don't even have to? I'm gonna use the soccer complex. If they're ready to go and they're waiting on to find out on their money to get other money, then why can't we just approve that as well?
Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, that revenue replacement is just for internal stuff of county government does.
Absolutely.
So if we want to put it towards economic development, that is internal stuff. Just like I'm gonna put it towards communications is internal stuff.
I'm gonna refer to Teresa on that.
Yeah, any, the guidance says anything that she would do in the normal course of government function.
Economic development is a normal.
Yeah, if you wanna write that up like that.
I don't really look at that as internal though, Jeff.
But when you say economic.
Okay, I'll argue with you all day long that I do see it as internal. It's economic development, it's exactly what it is. And we're looking at a larger return on investment on it than anything that we have out there that is applied for it and they're ready for it, so.
If it's not in our normal scheme of work, like, let's say we spend 200,000 a year on economic development normally. Is that what they're talking about or can we?
We've had people come to us with special requests that were following along economic development stuff or that we did in the scheme of things. You know, the lighting there at, what was that, Crossing 50 when we did that interchange there? Trying to think some of the other things that came up that we had put money into and agreed to, so.
Well, I, my, my feelings on it without thinking it through all the way is that, that funding a soccer complex is outside of internal. If we had a, if we had an internal economic development office, you know, right here in the building, yes, then that's, then it's internal. We, but we don't, we do have a sheriff's department, we do have an EMS, so when they're asking for more money, I see that as being internal.
We've got an economic development line though in our budget, and that's where our JCR EP comes from, our lobbyist, so it's.
And that would have a dollar amount on it, and that's what I was trying to get to. So is it based on that dollar amount that was spent?
We can argue on different parts of it if it was a different project too. It's just the soccer one's the one out there, so that's why I brought it up. I don't want to beat them up over this, but I just, if they give us a June 1st date, I'm still not happy about it and very frustrated it's taken this long. But I think we can live with that if we have a date. I just don't want to come back in two weeks going, well, we need two more weeks, you know? Let's get it, let's get it moving. We, that's the good thing about our county government, we get stuff done. If we need to have a meeting and approve something, we can get it done in 24 hours. Put it on the agenda, we can have a meeting, so.
Or clean up a property at 314 Gateway, right?
Yes, exactly.
Teresa, whatever you can do to expedite trying to get that ready by June 1st so we can have that out to the public, so we can at least give them a date because there's a lot of people interested in it. And then I'm gonna ask you again, if they're ready to move forward on a particular project that is inside the county, that's their decision to make and they can move forward?
Absolutely. If, if they want to use any of this money for inside the government projects, they can go forward that even if they want to use above and beyond the 10 million. We just have to do, we have to look at the COVID or the guidance and see what it falls under. But, yeah, I would recommend kind of looking at that 10 million first and then if something is kind of falls outside that range.
Today, I will send you Public Works, I'm sorry, EMS, Sheriff's Department's proposal. And then I'd like you to review it to make sure it all can be paid for within those funds.
And, and have they, have they, well, it could, I mean, let's stay on this one right, it's on top of my mind, which is a sheriff slash EMS. Do you have new numbers from them?
I do not.
Okay. My understanding is the number is, is lower than it first was because of some, I don't.
Did they send that to you guys?
No.
I think it was only just mentioned in a conversation I had with Eric. I think that came from Eric that it's a lower number, but he was also one that was saying we've got to move because there's a timeline to.
Okay, I'll get him to give me that information, then I'll give it to Teresa and then hopefully we can get a yea or nay and then you guys can.
Yeah, to me, that's the most time-critical. The Public Works, I don't think it's as critical. I think this is, is fairly critical, so.
And I can go back to them and ask them, is this still realistic as far as?
Ask him to update the, that, it was a letter from both the sheriff and the chief.
Do you want me to go back to Public Works to ask right now or just?
I don't think.
Well, let's do the first one first.
I don't think it's necessarily as critical as, as the Public Works or the EMS and sheriff, so.
All right, Teresa, I'll try to send you that today or tomorrow.
All right, sounds good.
And it looks like we're going forward with June 1st then.
Okay, I'll keep emailing them, I'll keep on them to see what we can get done as soon as we can.
So are, I mean, you're representing other people then, and they're doing this for other people. So has anybody rolled out an application at all yet or is everybody waiting for?
No, no. There's been applications that have rolled out. Yeah, there's been applications that have rolled out within the ARPA stuff. The one that they're basing it off of, that one has been rolled out as, from what I understand, so.
So they have a boilerplate, why don't they change the name at the top and roll it out?
I wish I knew.
Sorry, you're the one in the middle, Teresa.
I'm the middle one. But I will be, I will, I will be on them to, let's get this done. So I think I've got their attention now. I've been emailing them quite a bit the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'm fine with waiting till June 1st. That's what I've been telling people, that's what I told communities that I was hoping to.
Yeah, and I said, no, we need to get this moving. We don't have to be a typical government where things take forever.
Respect your elders.
Because there's no reason why we can't keep this going and take care of the communication stuff at the same time.
Okay, we'll be in contact then, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa. Have a great day.
Okay.
She's gonna block our phone calls pretty soon. So then, if we have those internal projects and we're gonna use that money for them, then we need to figure out how much of that 10 million is gonna be left or if any of it's gonna be left to go to the other applicants anyway. So, and I don't know when we plan on doing that, but that's gonna be the fun one too. Are we gonna do something with Public Works and Pringer Center? Economic Development, just using that as a big umbrella, so.
And that's, this spreadsheet is kind of that we try to do. I am putting the premium pay stuff in there, and this is what we base the reports on.
By the, by the way, now that, I don't want to get off the agenda, but it's sort of under this same big topic. We are addressing premium pay at the end of June.
Oh yeah, that should be coming up.
Yeah.
I think we already got it set on the agenda, but I'll look here. So we're including the two checks that are in June, and then it will be up to you guys to decide if we point any further than that on the premium pay.
And Teresa, we'll be asking you for stats.
She's off.
I'm sorry. Sheila, I'm sorry. Sheila, we'll be asking you for updated data with respect to employees and so on and so forth, yeah.
Yeah, we'll be ready with that.
Okay. I wonder if Jill will be, could possibly call this attorney earlier to keep you on the schedule.
She was saying, yeah, she said she would. That's gonna be closed.
True.
So do we have anything else to come before us today or do we want to recess?
Recession?
Or go into closed session? I'm trying to get you out of here.
No, we're fine, we're doing fine. If we can get them on. I didn't know how long or what we were talking about exactly. Surely it's not gonna be extended, but.
10:30 is what still.
Just when Victor's available, but if you want to start about 10:20 or so, I can kind of throw you all in on the background.
Okay.
Okay.
That's in 10 minutes, so.
Okay, yeah.
Motion to recess for 10 minutes?
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's kickball teams. Who's captain?
No, in 10 minutes.
Oh, dodgeball.